In our materials, we've got the brochure that lists our legislative priorities. I think we're looking to consult, but it's in the language on first four is still what we'd like it to be, and I think then we also want to provide some themes for I was five and six that we'd like to see included. I think you said it's to capture our thoughts, and Kristen, can I ask you a bit?
Yep. So if you, as you look through one through four, because those were reaffirmations of previous efforts that we've made at the State House, we capture the language from previous brochures, so we'd ask that you take a look for that. If you see anything in there that you think needs to be refined for this legislative session, we would definitely welcome your input on that. And then for five and six, now I'm actually expecting you to draft it, we just know, want to know what the high points are that you would like to see us connect with as we, as we write the paragraphs out for them.
Do you have ideas now or you want us to?
Now, or you can email them to us, either way works. We have a little bit of time, a little bit of question to work with on this, so. And maybe just a quick reminder for you in terms of our legislative process, so we will schedule a, our first meeting with legislators during the month of December. We like to catch them before session starts, and we like to have our brochure ready for them when we meet with them that first time, so we've got. We usually meet, Kim, do you remember, is it the third Friday?
I think that is.
I think it's the third Friday, I've got to go check.
Where's the last Friday?
Yeah, because it's in relation to the legal women voters. We used to meet on Saturday after the legal women voters, and we had a huge attrition. Legislators didn't stay because they were there for the chamber meeting in the morning, and legal women voters, and then us after that, and we'd usually get one or two. We asked them, we polled them, they said, "Let's do it Friday before the legal women voters meeting," so we go the evening before. We know they're coming back to town for the legal women voters meeting, so they meet with us four o'clock.
It's actually the last Friday.
Last Friday, thank you. And just as a reminder, we invite all districts that have a foot in Johnson County, and we invite all of their board members, we invite their administrative teams, we invite their organized labor leadership. There's about six districts that are regular attendees with either board members or administrators, and, and teachers and others. The rest, I think, probably just because they, they don't see those, our legislators necessarily as being their legislators, so we don't necessarily get a huge turnout from So if you'd like to offer thoughts now, we'd be more than willing to take those, but if it's easier for you to just email those into us, that is absolutely.
Just to have on top of mind on the rest of the speech, Chapter 20, I think something around the lines of, you know, we need to be a state leader in attracting talent to our state, and, you know, that is a, was a good reason to come here, and now it's gone, right? I don't know how you worded that, but a way to attract talent.
And the value we place in our school workers and that, you know, we want to be able to allow things beyond wage to be negotiated, and that supports the success.
And maybe one sentence, I think, about what an impact this had on morale, because I don't think that can be understated. I know, you know, when that passed, I mean, I was looking, and so, you know, I was just like, whoa.
One would have wanted to get that.
Yeah, and I heard that time and again, and that's, and when you talk, I mean, that becomes a very visceral fear that doesn't help any of any legislators.
So that should give you enough.
Yep.
From the bouncers, it's just tax dollars for public schools.
Level playing field. And you know what I mean by that?
Mm-hmm.
You can't, because private schools aren't held to the same standards.
Don't have to admit the same kids.
Yeah.
All right, wonderful, we'll put something together, we'll, we may, just given timing, we may just send it out to you for review, and then just ask you to individually email back your thoughts on the paragraphs when we have them in. Like I said, we'd really like to have it ready to go by December 1st, just so that by the time we get to that virtual legislative session, all of our legislators have seen it, they've got it in their hands, they've read through it, they know where we stand. Sometimes we have an opportunity to have some individual meetings with them prior to actually getting them in for that first one, because things are usually a little slow for them in December, so it's good to meet with them.
The December one, if it's the last Friday, which it wouldn't be, because that would be over winter break, the second to last, that's the last day for winter break, will you still have form that day?
Yeah, what we've done in the past, because legal women voters doesn't start until January, we've got a little bit more flexibility in December, so I frequently polled the legislators, and I just throw a doodle poll out for them, and let them tell us when most of them will be available, because for them, December is usually more dependent on their job schedule than their legislative schedule, so then they let us know, and then we usually pick the Friday that has the greatest availability.
Anything else to add?
Will you, will you have current numbers for the, the other side, student population, or we just use 17 still?
Oh, I, we should, if you, he's looking at the backside, if you will, the far left side, we should have certified enrollment done by them. Kristen's just using it as a placeholder for right now. We're almost done with certain enrollment right now, and then as soon as that's done, we'll be able to upload that. Sorry, she did ask me to mention that, I failed to do so.
Anything else? What can you see next up is voluntary transfers, and we all have a modified document.
You do?
We had some good input from early members last Thursday, it was a special Monday, we pulled a column about the two-way equity transfer exception, so maybe the easiest thing to do is just walk through.
That's what I thought I'd do, a walkthrough, bullet by bullet for you. I just had another follow-up email from Joe, he had a couple more thoughts on it, so I tell you that this is draft version 1016, and you're likely to have another draft version on it, just because he had a couple things that he looked at the second time around, and thought might need a little attention. So the first thing that you'll note, that first set of bullets there, we're just simply describing what voluntary transfer is, and then what it is not. We often get confusion between voluntary transfer and open enrollment, I presume that you're probably hearing that from parents too. They frequently refer to it as open enrollment when they mean voluntary transfer. I'll tell you right now, one of the things that Amy and I have talked at length about, and you're going to see reflected in here, the open enrollment application is March 1st, so we made the voluntary transfer application March 1st also. Our rationale for that is, if a parent thinks they're applying for open, or they think they're applying for open enrollment, but they fill out a voluntary transfer form, if we had a due date of April 1st, and that was when they found out they filled out the wrong form, they then would have missed the open enrollment window. So by picking March 1st for both, if they fill out the wrong form, there's still enough time for them to do that open enrollment form prior to that March 1st deadline, so we didn't want to set them up for failure in case they were confused. This is also not the process we use for students who are homeless, there's McKinney-Vento has a whole separate process for that, and so we give the references on there for people to access the appropriate one. The second set of bullets down there, and this came from feedback review at the last meeting, we have a group of students who will be grandfathered in, so we've separated them, if you look at the top of the next page, those are continuing exceptions, so first of all, to take a look at the grandfathered exceptions, talked about two different groups that are kind of similarly situated in the first two bullets, permanent elementary transfers and SINA, or School in Need of Assistance, transfers. So that first bullet, those are the kids who were part of that earlier process whereby you applied for voluntary transfer, and it was granted through your entire elementary career. That's a two-year runout, those are students who will be fifth graders next year and sixth graders the year after that. The next group are your SINA transfers, and again, that's a holdover from No Child Left Behind, when we were required to allow people the opportunity to transfer. Just a note on this, Amy and I talked about this, and just, I just want to make sure that you were reminded that when No Child Left Behind expired, our obligation for SINA students evaporated at that point in time. We have continued to allow them to transfer, but that was not a requirement of the Every Student Succeeds Act, so we weren't required to continue those transfers, however, we did allow them to transfer, so we still do have a number of students who are out there on SINA transfers. Those students would be entering grades four, five, and six next year, so the runout on that is three years. Collectively, between those two groups, 67 kids, if I have my numbers right. So not a lot of kids between those two groups. The next bullet on there is students receiving special services. Tried to clean this up a little bit from the last time around, so these are either students who are English language learners, receive special ed services, or are on a 504 plan, and the district has placed them somewhere other than their home school residence. Oftentimes, that was because there was no program in their home school residence, and so we asked them to attend a different school in order to make sure that we could meet their needs, so they obviously, it wasn't their choice for us to assign them somewhere else, and so we want to make sure that they have the opportunity to continue through the sixth grade year. We also know that oftentimes, they have siblings who are not receiving services, but it's a complication for the family to have kids in two elementary schools, and so we've allowed those students to follow their, their sibling to the school placement, and so we want to also extend to those students the opportunity to have continuity with their education.
Is this a change in the previous, we have this around the siblings?
Yes, and so that was feedback, sorry, we received quite a bit of feedback, both via email and when we were at the Listening Post last Thursday about this, with parents who thought they inferred it, but wanted to know it, and wanted to see it in a little bit more concrete format, so that's the italicized sentence in there that, very specific to those, those siblings, to ensure that they've got that opportunity to continue through their sixth grade year.
I think siblings was always included, but what happened was, if the program opened back at their home school, everybody had to return, except for if it was their, that student's capstone.
Right.
Okay.
Then that last bullet, and I know you heard quite a bit about this at the meeting on Thursday, is, we captured it the last time around in the last draft, but it was not done clearly, so hopefully this is a little bit more clear. So we are looking at that area that was the Scanlon Farms Elementary Attendance Area when we were originally looking at the school across from Liberty, then it became part of that Grant Elementary School Attendance Area Development Process, and we're looking at students that would be grades one through six next year, that's different, we talked about two through six in the last iteration, and they are students that would be zoned to one of three areas this year, either Lincoln, Van Allen, or Wickham, and then next year, it would be Lincoln students that were zoned to Penn, Van Allen students that are zoned to Wickham, and Wickham students that are zoned to Penn. So those are the three areas that were discussed with parents at that time when we made those changes to the Grant Elementary School Attendance Area, and the board at that time didn't take action to create a grandfathering process for them, we kind of left it in the on-deck circle, and said that we would come back to it as we finished up this process.
So Amy, at the, at that meeting, there was the gentleman in the Wickham Attendance Area, this would allow him to stay at Wickham?
Yeah, he has a kindergartner, so that child would be a first grader next year, and that makes the room for that to happen, but it doesn't make room for any siblings to come along with that, so eventually the family will have to make a decision.
Gotcha. So the, the kindergartner would be able to stay there for six years, but the other one would have to go to?
The one that's not at school yet, yeah.
So in a sense, if you think about it, it's not unlike what we did when Liberty opened up. So we told parents, if you have a child that you would like to continue at West, you have the opportunity to do that, however, new children will go to Liberty, and your choice is to allow this one to finish and that one to go here, or to move them both here. So we give them essentially that same privilege that we provided when we opened Liberty. Then the next group is a continuing group, so these are those that we could consider for exceptions moving forward. Capstone transfers, we've always allowed those students that are fifth grade moving into sixth grade, that opportunity to finish their elementary career in that school, not make them move again. We spent a lot of time talking about this, so it's still in here, and I'm sure that we'll have some more time to talk about it, but if you hang on, and I'll get through all four of them, then we can come back and address the other ones individually. But district employee transfers, clean up the language a little bit, because there were some questions about it, so students and district employees will be allowed to attend the employees' employment attendance area during the year of employee assignment, because there were questions that were raised the last time we talked about it, in terms of what happens if I move to a different attendance center, can my kid follow me, not follow me, how does that work? So this would give employees that opportunity to have their children at their place of employment regardless of where it is as they move through the district. Equity balance transfers, and we're going to see more on that when we get to Appendix A, but wrote that so that voluntary school transfers can be considered in situations where there's space available, and it helps the board achieve the overall goal of increased equity according to Appendix A, so we've got lots of operational definitions when we get down to that. And then finally, the state of Iowa, open enrollment good cause exceptions, and who was with me? Now I'm blanking.
Join entities.
Join entities yesterday, there, a question was, arose about foster care, so you'll see that that is in here, so it's change in residence due to family move, change in marital status, foster care, adoption or treatment program, pervasive harassment, or severe health issue, and those are considered to be good cause exceptions. That language comes right out of the state open enrollment policy, and so again, that gives us that discretion as people come in and experience those problems, for us to grant those exceptions. So, how about if we go through those four, and I'll try to answer questions for you about those, and then we can at some point pop down to Appendix A, and I'll walk you through that.
Yeah, are there any concerns on capstone transfer? That's been there ever since.
Right, and, and the ones, like, again, at my table at that community Listening Post, there was comment to lower that to like third or fourth grade.
Oh, lower to third or fourth?
The capstone, and I'm just, that was.
So just, just as a reminder, we do incoming sixth graders, incoming eighth graders, and at the high school, we do incoming juniors and seniors, because again, where possible, we tend to just follow state law, and state law allows that, if you were to move from here to Clear Creek as an incoming junior, you have the right to attend here your junior and senior years by that state open enrollment law, so we, we lifted that and use that. So that's the only time we use more than one year for capstones, so it's juniors and seniors.
I have a, I have quite a few thoughts, but I have a, this is a question that kind of came up, when it comes to the good cause exceptions, what the process is, how it's determined that it meets that, who gets to voice the opinion, like, does the principal in school say, hey, I think this does, or how that works?
Yeah, so usually what happens with the good cause exception is, you'll have a parent that says, hey, I want to transfer, they'll come into the office and tell the principal, hey, I want to transfer, the principal inquires why, they tell him it's a good cause exception, they immediately send it upstairs to Amy and I, or Matt and I, we receive those, we take those in, if there's a need for additional documentation, we make that request, they send it in to us, we review it, then we either grant it, or if it's, if it doesn't meet the good cause exceptions, we, we often meet with the parents to walk them through that in terms of why or why not. So that happens at the district office. You could have the equity office involved in it, you could have the student services office involved in it, depending on what the nature of the request for the exception is. The foster care example, that was used yesterday when we were at the joint entities meeting, it's not uncommon in situations like that for there to be restraining orders and everything like that that's associated with that, so it's not uncommon for us to have law enforcement or juvenile authorities involved in that too, so we may, sometimes have to reach out outside of the district with the parents to get some of that corroborating support from municipal partners.
I guess I was wondering if the principal makes any sort of recommendation to it, I mean, I'm thinking along the lines of, if the principal says, you know what, I think this child will succeed better in a different environment, that would mean something, right?
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
Bullying harassment situation is going on, they may check that box, but I may call the principal and say, okay, what's the substance of this, you know, claim that there's been bullying, and that's the reason for the transfer, and then we work, the principal said, was there a valid bullying situation, or that's where Steve said equity office could have been already involved in that situation, and founded the bullying and harassment complaint at that point, or the principal may say, well, we know there's an accusation of bullying, but there's no valid bullying, and we need to make a determination after that.
Can you put us in the comment list? I want to talk about, if we're ready to go to the district employee transfer, I thought about this a lot for a conversation last week, and my, and we sort of started, I started settling, getting into my thought process by the end of that conversation, that this, the goal of this is really an employee benefit, as opposed to an exception to the voluntary transfer policy, and I would actually like to see this taken off of the voluntary transfer policy, and if our ICA and NCIU unions believe this is, and constituents think this is an employee benefit that is relevant and meaningful to their working groups, then they can negotiate for this as a permissive or something that we need employee handbook, but because we don't have any data, we don't know how many people are actually using this, and because we think it's an employee benefit, this feels like something that our unions can book, bespoke, permissive, contract, I should be advocated for if your constituents want, so I hope that belongs here, I think we've got another one to address this through the negotiations this spring.
Anecdotally, we had administrative council today, Amy, Matt, we have six hands up, do we even have that many hands up when we ask? It was a pretty small number, we had the principals in, and we said, are you aware of any employees in your building in any employment category that have a child, not someone who lives in your attendance area or works there, but somebody who lives outside and brings their child in? It was a handful that were aware of it, so I'm, again, we don't know, because we don't track that, but it didn't appear, at least anecdotally, to be a very heavily utilized option.
I'm not trying to suggest that I don't want to provide this benefit to our employees, but I think the more appropriate venue for addressing it is through those contract negotiations through that ICAU or ICA process.
And I, I like that, I am wondering though, what happens to the employees that aren't included in those?
So does a handbook matter?
It would apply to all employees then, so for instance, I, you know, when we negotiate with ICA, about 70% of the teachers are in there, whatever.
No, I mean, that aren't in any union, they're not, like, for example, student family advocates aren't covered by it.
Sure, sure, so holidays would be another example, right? They're, they're not in a union, so they're not collectively bargained, when we determine holiday utilization for the, the, about, I think it's about 70% of our total employees, 68% are represented by a collective bargaining agreement, whatever they get, that's what the other 32% get.
So is there a handbook or something for them? Where could this live?
Yeah, that's where it would live, is in the handbook.
So there's a handbook for folks that aren't under?
We're actually, our goal would be, our goal would be for things like holidays that apply to 100% of the employees, something like that would live in the handbook, so we can all see it, so it cuts across all categories, so something like this could live in there too.
Because it would apply to all employees.
Yes, it would, we would not just apply it to union members, we'd apply it to all employees.
I mean, the discussion we had at the table, or I had at the table with the group, they were supportive, most of them were supportive of the idea of offering that as a benefit, but had some one-on-one conversations, even with staff members of the district, who surprisingly was just like, yeah, no, I'm good, but not having that as a benefit, but there are also people that don't use it, or I talked to one that they voluntarily transferred their kids out, but not into the school they're teaching in, so it's like, that really wouldn't help me, because they're not going to the same school. I, I, I do want to see that benefit offered to our district employees, and I want to actually, I mean, I prefer to see it here, but I'm willing to work to get it into a handbook that we can have starting next year, I mean, I want that, when this goes into effect, I want that option on the table. If we're not certain if that could happen in a handbook, then we need to go back to that discussion of where will it live, so employees can.
So I have Chase, isn't he starting to work on pulling together what a handbook would be, but we need to have that with the other negotiations, see if we can.
I think it would not be normal for our side of the table to offer out, but nothing usually, the other side of it, but I, I mean, I think this is a place where we're in that sort of gray area, because I want to see it happen, because I don't want, I don't want anybody harmed who's taking the initiative, who's an employee of the district, and I haven't really, you know, I don't, it's not like we're putting this out there to, you know, we've been working this now a super long time, but I haven't had any feedback on this. Nobody's contacted me and said, this is important, and compared to like voluntary transfer, lots of people have made extreme efforts to.
Hy-Vee, you should shop at Hy-Vee more. You've got the conversation.
Then I get it going, so, so I'm kind of with you, I want to see it, I could see it here, but at the same time, I can see at the table, in a handbook, that could be a place, and I don't want to spend too much time on something that we're not getting a whole lot of pressure from.
And, and we did get some concerns, and Paul raised some good concerns, that I've struggled with it back and forth, on the instance of, and I think we got, all got an email about, well, what if I am, have the ability to be a stay-at-home parent, and I know that this benefit is offered to the district, so then I'll go out there and get a two-hour-a-day paraposition. I think we have a lot of parapositions that need to be filled, I mean, that's one thing where I'm like, I don't want people to abuse it, but at the same time, we have a need of people qualified to serve it, and you become a district employee, I mean, it's just one of those hard things where I don't foresee a whole heck of a lot of people jumping on that, so I've gone back and forth on the damage of not offering it versus offering it.
We discussed that very thing at my table, and, you know, to think about the benefit being the staff coming in with their kid, they get to go to school, the staff fills their day, the kid comes home, and then, if that's the benefit as opposed to something just, well, I'll just be there for an hour, and then go to whatever school I want, they said very explicitly, if you're going to have an exception, then you call out, like, it's a six-hour position, or a full-time position, or whatever else, if you're worried about abuse, make it more explicit, as a benefit to employees that's counter to that.
Our short hours positions are our hardest to fill.
Yeah, and so, I just, that was the discussion I had with the table, it wasn't my idea.
Yeah, but here's, my thing on that, Steve, is, if you're filling that position for this reason, maybe that's not the person to be in that position, because those are important positions, if your only reason's so you can go to school there, and that's going to be super hard to parse out in an interview.
I think I, I said pretty much everything I need to say on Tuesday, so you know where I stand on it, on both sides, I don't want to see it here, and I'm not necessarily in favor of it in the handbook, but I guess we'll cross that bridge when we get there.
I did have a parent at my table who is in this situation, and would very much like us to keep it.
Well, I mean, anybody who's in a voluntary transfer situation now wants us to keep it.
But she's, she was, I mean, they're not voluntary transferred there currently under this reason, because this reason doesn't exist, but it would apply to them.
And if, if it were to stay, I mean, I would frankly, and again, this is where it starts to sound more like a handbook thing, I'd want to see like health insurance, if you were this percentage, show the benefit, and I think that, but again, then that starts to sound more like a negotiated thing.
I mean, it's comfortable having Chase or Jamie, the white person, Steve, as that's somebody that understands the handbook, and that, I believe that it includes, or it's just in the handbook, it applies to all employees regardless.
If we're going to move it out of here, I think why, well, one of the things that Chase and I talked about later this afternoon, is we may actually survey the employees, because when we ask our administrators, they, they kind of, we had some hands that were kind of doing this, and, so I'm not sure if they knew, because we said, we're thinking, you know, secondary, how about your evening custodians, I mean, we wanted to know everybody, that's why we had just kind of a few half-up hands, maybe, maybe not type of thing, so we might want to actually know who are the people that they're affected by.
Yeah, let's do that, if it works.
To get the data, yeah.
Take it out of here, do a survey, and that'll inform its place in the employee group.
And I would just say that if that happens, I don't know, what can happen to notify or to inform people of that, but if principals can just, you know, remember, they need to tell their employees that, because if, if a parent looks at this and doesn't see it, they're just going to say, okay, well, this is comprehensive, I assume that it's not an option.
Would anyone making use of this today have to apply for any of these today? I mean, would we, so, so would we catch them that way, I guess is what I'm saying, to your point, is if they were going to have to come back in and request this voluntary transfer?
We would, we just, at this point in time, wouldn't know who they are.
I understand, but as they would come in this spring to say, I want my transfer, I think we'd be like, oh, that doesn't exist anymore, if that's the path it is, or if it does, because it's an employee benefit, but all of our staff have it.
If you take it out here, and voting on Tuesday, likely, are we likely to have something put in the handbook timely enough that somebody who's going to have a kid next year, are they going to have to move, and then maybe get it moved back, I don't know how this plays, but that's my concern.
If we don't have it in the handbook, we can certainly have it in a administrative guideline and procedure, which the board reviews and approves, so that we don't have to wait for it to go into a handbook at this time, and then when the handbook's ready, we can migrate it in there, but there's definitely the possibility that, we want to make sure that by March 1st, these folks know it. But there's definitely the possibility that, we want to make sure that by March first, these folks know it. And if we don't have a handbook done by March first, we would be able to do that. I would like to see that, because I, you know, just knowing negotiations in the past, probably it would be done in that time. And one day, I think it just is a good, even though it's fairly, probably a small number of people, I think it sets a good message that, hey, we're at, I've never known this, we're going to offer you a benefit. You know, I've never seen, well, it's the district's idea to actually do this. So that, that would be a, and so to move ahead with the policy, or, you know, have the board go and talk about that. I think that says a lot about kind of what we're trying to do for our employees, even on some pretty. It's a pretty straightforward process.
So when, when people read this and pull it up, though, if it's not there, they're going to assume they don't need any of these boxes. So I just would say, how are we going to, today.
We'll know who they are, though, because we're going to survey them right now. So we'll know who lives in that.
All the employees, sure.
All the employees, because we don't know who any of them are. So I'm literally going to have to send it out to all district employees, because that's the only way I'll be able to capture it.
Because the other option would be to just keep it there until the other documentation exists.
My goal would actually be to have the admin guideline written up, now that I'm thinking about this, before I even send it out. So it goes out as an attachment to the request for employees to apply to us, so that they can actually see and read through it.
But if you do that, are you already saying that we're going to allow that?
Well, what we can do is we can make an.
The necesses are.
But we, I mean, but if we're going to vote on voluntary transfers, and then we're just adding a group that's going to be able to do it.
Well, we're under consideration. I mean, it still has, I think you would have to say it's got to be board vote or approval. I don't think.
Well, that's what I want, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we need to, because, yeah, no, we can. Yeah, we get a draft out to them, so they know what it looks like. We can delimit it by time at this point if we want to, recognizing that it might be part of collective bargaining process or the admin guideline and procedure process. But at least as part of that process, figuring out who they are, gives us a start on it.
I just don't want it to go out to be like, who are you, and we're going to allow you to do this in the future? We just need to know who you are. Because we haven't said that.
Yeah, no.
I have the feeling it's going to go that way, but I would still prefer it to be a board discussed and voted.
That's, that's pretty straightforward.
And my, my point was, you know, you take it out now and don't have anything else, even if you may have something in mind for the future, but it's not timely enough, and they've already had to change where their kids go to school, then you might as well not do anything after that. Because then they've already pulled, they're not going to move them again, just to put them back. So I think there's got to be, if there's, and maybe this is kind of weird at a work session, but if there's a likelihood that they will have a chance to do it in the future, and I feel like there has to be some sort of stopgap. I think without having that conversation, voting on that, then it makes it kind of weird.
I think, I think we could put in place a, we can have a temporary stopgap, use your term, in place prior to any further formal action by the board through collective bargaining or approval of some kind of guideline and procedure that puts it in there. Even if it's only to say, we need to know who you are, what your count is, and what this might look like by March first, I think.
If we were to do that in the fall much first, do you think the survey's going to go out?
I'd do that.
Or go to the end of the year?
I'd do that for the calendar year.
Yeah, and so that we'll know what, what the correlation is.
It'd be nice to know if it's six or sixty.
And then if we know, if we know by January first, and then if we need to put a procedure in place or a guideline, we've got time to do that.
To be perfectly honest with you, if it's six, you may just decide, we're just going to grandfather the current ones in and leave it.
And, I mean, so I just, I think you need the data. We talked about that last time.
Right.
But, but if we can get the survey down and get the data, then we've got time after the end of the year to create a procedure.
Sure.
I'm sorry, the administrative guideline, or we're going to follow whatever the data suggests we should do.
Because remember, one of the things that I shared with you last time is, part of it is knowing in advance, because if what it is, is I would like to work where my, my student goes to school, if we notify employees far enough in advance, there's usually enough flexibility for most employee groups to make that kind of move if they say, I work in school A, and my kid goes to school B, I'm bringing my kid to school A because it's convenient for me right now, but if that option isn't available, well, then I'll just go work at school B, provide that I have enough time to put in for a transfer request as an employee. So whether you're food service or custodian, whatever it is, you've got time to do that then.
What, what kind of timing is required for that?
I mean, if we know it before spring break next year, we've got a lot of flexibility there for placement. Especially support staff, lots of flexibility. Teaching staff, if I know by spring break, it'd be Matt and I, we'd make those things work.
But that wouldn't necessarily line up with the March first deadline for this, so.
No, but if we were to know that, we try to actually get staffing rolling in January, so if we know who those people are, if we've got an idea of where this is going, that gives us that opportunity to have that direct dialogue with those staff members between now and then. I have a feeling, again, anecdotally, based on the feedback from the, the crew this afternoon, we are going to have a handful of people for whom this applies to. It could be under ten.
I would also like to ask, then your survey would ask if it, if they would be okay with sending their kids to their regular school or not. I know there are a couple of staff members that send their kids to different schools that happen to work there, but if they had to stop, they would be fine with sending their kids back to whatever school they're assigned to.
They might even be more fine if they could transfer into that school.
So to summarize.
Yes, to pull it out of here?
It's coming out of here. We're going to give a survey of all the district employees, asking if they're participating in this process now. And we'll have that data by the end of the year. So in a whole session after the end of the year, or more than a week, if they have data inside, we'll have them manage that. Is it employee handbook? Is it grandfathered in? Is it provide flexibility, like we're describing to the letting them through to their kids' homeschool? But we'll have time after the end of the year to work on that, decide what our next steps are, and freshen the paperwork. Yeah? Okay.
All right.
Hi.
Now, I'd actually, ask you to actually scan down to the page, to the third page with appendix A on it. Chase says there are way too many words in this document in general, but I tried to take what you shared with me, what Joe shared with me, and tried to put it in place, and Lori, the feedback that you shared, and what we got from Joe in response to that, tried to capture what you talked about in this, and tried to do it in as straightforward a way as possible. So we really need your unvarnished feedback about whether that, this form does that. So when we talk about equity balance transfers, we're talking about that first line there, "The district may consider voluntary school transfers in situations where there is space available and helps the board achieve the overall goal of increased equity." So now some operational definitions. So equity will be measured by the percentage of low socioeconomic status students to high SES students in each attendance area. How will we decide who those are? Low SES students are those who are recipients of free and reduced-priced lunch, or receive direct certification from the state, or they have a fee waiver. And then by default, high SES students are those who do not have any of those three. So then, when do we do that? So every year on October first, we do our snapshot for the state for certified enrollment. We use that then to determine our ratio of high to low SES students in each of the attendance areas, and put a note in there on that next bullet. Following that annual certification, we will release a list of schools with the corresponding equity ratios. Usually, we have that wrapped up by the end of October. We're always cleaning up a few loose ends. We claim this, this district claims that student got ironed out, figure out where they really go to school. Usually, as a matter of fact, Kim, how close are we right now? Pretty close, aren't we? End of the week, maybe? So we're almost there right now, so usually by mid-October, we've got that ironed out. So then that information would be publicly available as soon thereafter as possible. So then parents have a long lead time, because remember, it's not until March first that their application is due. So we give them at least a couple of months to figure out where they sit in terms of where their school is and where the rest of the schools in the district are. That next bullet, and this is where I need your help, because we wrote two sets of language here. For the filing school year, on a space-available basis, and we're going to have to look at the chart here in a minute, but just we'll look at the language first. High SES students will be allowed to, we have two choices here. Transfer to schools above the district equity, average equity ratio, or the second set of languages, transfer to schools with a higher equity ratio than their home attendance area. So what does that mean? If you look down below, what you have here are the seventeen, eighteen numbers. Not totally useful for us, because we don't have numbers for Grand Hoover in there, but at least it gives us a place to start. So you see the schools rank ordered by the percentage of low SES students, starting with Kirkwood and going down to Wicco. The district average is in the middle there. So we have those schools that are above the district average, and those schools that are below the district average. So back up to the, the bullet above. So if you have a high SES student, we really have two choices. Can that student transfer to a low SES school? So for instance, can a Garner student transfer to Hills? Or, the section that's underlined, can they transfer to a school with a higher equity ratio than their home attendance area? So could that same Garner student transfer to Borlaug? So the metaphor that I was using with the admin team when we were talking today was if we think of a volleyball court or a tennis court, right? You've got one set of districts that are on one side of the net, one set of districts that are on the other side of the net. So as a board, you need to look at it and say, are you interested in allowing students to transfer only across the net? Or can they transfer to schools on their side of the net? So can that Garner student go to Lemmy? Because Lemmy's got a higher percentage of low SES students. Can they go to Borlaug? Can they go to Weber? Or do we only want them to allow, allow them to go to schools on the other side of the net? Or Man, Corville Central, Lucas, et cetera. So I think that's the, the question we have to ask, and then I think that, that takes care of those last two bullets and helps define it for us. Like I said, Joe's got a couple of cleanups on language on this page, but other than that, he was primarily okay with it, as it was written.
Personally, I prefer the other side of the net.
Okay. So that's the italicized one. That's where I'm at, too.
That makes the most sense to me. I'll give you an argument as to why you wrote the other way. Because if that line moves, you're going to have someone each year potentially have to not be in that school, and then the number's going to change every single time.
That's my concern, is when you get these close schools.
Especially the ones going around.
Now you're channeling Amy. Amy came to me with all the devil's advocate questions that you just came up with. So here's, here's one thing that I wanted to make sure that I specified in here. So if you look up above, we're looking at that October first certification date. So we are going to take a snapshot, and we are going to measure the school. What we're not going to do is have a moving number. So I'm not going to say, okay, I had this student move from Plurville Central to Borlaug, and therefore now Borlaug's number goes up two tenths of a percent. I'm only looking at that number as it's defined on October first. I will look at it again next October first. So that way, if there are two schools that are really close to each other, even if you said you can transfer on the same side of the net, I'm not going to change the number between this October first and next October first. So you wouldn't put people in a position where schools might switch places in line.
No, but they, their number might move to the other side of average.
Right.
Right?
Yep.
Like, they'll probably still be in the same order potentially, or ones that are really, really close. But the average, theoretically, the average, should stay roughly the same, or continue to trend up, but it could hop around with another school.
Yep, so one of the things that we looked at was, at least today, now I know I looked at Davenport, actually, I was a little confused, because theirs is a, theirs is, they measure their ratio a little differently, but they literally only show the, the average in hundreds, everything else is in tens. You can't tell how close those schools at the margin are to the one in the middle. With ours, you can see thirty-nine, six, seven is the district average. You've got Horn at forty-three, nineteen, and Weber at thirty-five, eight, seven. There's a gap.
Yeah, that's pretty close.
And you'd have to move quite a few kids to get close to the middle. So when I was looking at it statistically, I actually started throwing different numbers in there to see what hit. You'd have to move a lot of kids before you actually got close to the middle. So I'm not worried about any of the schools really getting too close to the net today, with the numbers that are in there today. And that doesn't mean it's different tomorrow, but at least given the seventeen, eighteen numbers, I have a high degree of confidence that Weber isn't going to move on this side, and Horn's not going to move on this side, at least right now.
And honestly, if a parent's concerned about it, they can choose a school that's higher to the top of the list. You know, if they want to know that they're not going to be moved around, go ahead and pick one towards the top.
Instead of going from Horn to Weber to Wood.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're not going all the time, though, right? They've got a target in mind.
Right, but if, if they're going to choose the transfer, you know, you can't have your cake and eat it too.
Well, you're, yeah, that's why we have it every year. I mean, every year, you have to reapply. I mean, every year, you may not get in. That next year, that school may be full with kids that live in that area, so you may not get in anyway.
Right.
I mean, it's a, it's a chance to take.
I know at my table, there'd be two people that would be doing that exact, wherever.
Yeah.
Yes, oh, yes. Visitor, fantastic.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wasn't there, but I just told. That's why I sent it out, because I thought, mainly because I, that person was at my table, and I didn't know if everyone else got the same personal license. I, I am on board with the idea of allowing it to further our goal. And I would just be, I want to make sure that however we put it together, if it's this way or not, we don't trip ourselves and all of a sudden we have to undo something because a line we've been not familiar with. We're going to do it to further the goal, it should be fairly straightforward. And I agree, looking at it in this, these numbers, that, that average is right in the middle with a pretty good cushion on either side. But shortly here, our next topic is building blocks. I'm going to assume some of these numbers are not going to look like this.
They're not.
So.
I'll play a little bit of devil's advocate for you. So remember, we opened up Alexander, and we created an attendance area for Wood and an attendance area for Alexander. And we do have a number of students that are zoned to Wood that chose to attend Alexander. So if we said they have to go across the net, now we've got some kids that right now are zoned Wood, attend Alexander, that they would not be able to do that if we said they had to go to a Weber, Borlaug, Lemmy, etc. So are, is their movement from Wood to Alexander furthering the goal of reducing the low SES numbers at Wood? Yes. Might they be increasing the number of SES kids at Alexander? Yes. What does that do for us overall? That goes back to your conversation about, are we kind of moving the, the schools in the order there? But I just wanted to share that, because I actually dug into it to see kind of where are some of these kids going? And that was one of the issues that I found. There aren't a lot like that, but there are a couple like that. So that's why I wrote it as across the net, or on your side of the net, for discussion.
Now that I was devil's advocate, I will say that across the net is the cleaner line, and it most likely will, I hate using this term, but it gives you the bigger bang for your buck, right? Because you're looking at much bigger number spread that you're going to have.
Absolutely.
So you get that thing. I mean, if you look at lineup, with these numbers here, you know, you've got Wood in twenty, where you're talking after the decimal point difference.
Right.
Right?
Yep.
It doesn't get you anywhere to move one from the other, probably just flip blocks to by decimal points.
But it might mean something for the family.
Right, that's, that's, that's the only, that's the only thing for me. Anything that, that benefit to those families, either with childcare or, or that, I'm willing to, to be very supportive of helping.
Adult, long-term, transit.
Right. Right, well, but that's.
I mean, this might have that same situation from Longfellow to, I don't know, I mean, somebody below the line, we might have that.
Yeah, I wouldn't do that below the line. I'm thinking of the people above the line. You know, if, I don't know, and there's just some situations where I think.
There are definitely, I got an email from a parent, they're, both of the schools, her attendance area and the one that's in voluntary transfers, they're both above the line. And it's kind of to your point, I mean, if there's additional supports because of childcare, or transportation, or, you know, after-school support, or whatever, things.
I'll go back to the transportation, just as a, as an argument piece, you know, that's, you're two miles or you're not. I mean, man, being one point nine nine, if I could have that bus, it sure would have saved me some money on my childcare. You know what I mean?
I know.
As opposed to paying for the bus. So as we start, as we start going in there, and you start giving more and more exceptions to people for reasons than the people's reasons.
And if I can say what I wanted to say then without getting teed up, to that, to that point two, next person in. Along, along that line, we recognize, yeah, it's, it's much cleaner just to have, this is a black and white, very simple, makes it much easier on you guys. But is there situations where it's better bus, city bus route? Yes, the after-school program there fits their schedule better than at the other situation. I'm willing to consider helping as much as we can those that need the most help.
Maybe one last thing I'd throw out, because this became apparent as we were looking at it, is if you think about geographic proximity, you see some same side of the net geographic proximity. So when you're thinking about families that may be looking at it for the, some of the reasons that Phil was talking about, you've got Twain, Wood, Alexander, obviously closely clustered together. Got the same thing down below, Garner, Penn. You know, so you see some of that. So you may have, it may be easier for parents if they're looking for that voluntary transfer on some of those same side of the net schools, just because they're geographically proximate to each other. If you're transporting, then maybe, maybe there's more childcare openings at Wood than there are at Twain. So I'm gonna choose to go to Wood because it's right next door. Where if I had to find another place that a childcare opening was on the other side of the net, where am I looking at now? Weber, Borlaug, Lemmy, Lonco, Van Allen, Garner may not be as close, may not be as easy for me. So just some of the other things that we were batting around when we were looking at. So I don't know if there's a right or wrong on it.
Do you have a definition of what space available means?
Space available, usually what Amy and I do is we get those numbers in and we start, we work with our enrollment team. They do our roll-ups for us as we take the kids and we move them into the next grade level. We look at the kindergarten projections based on the pre-K kids. We then put them into the ratio and say, given these live-in kids and this particular ratio for that school based on where it falls in the RAM, we have this many sections. So those sections, remember, give us a range. So we'll look at it and usually say, we don't wanna go to the top of the range because we wanna leave a little bit of space for people to move in. But if, you know, if you divide it out and there's seventeen kids in that section and that range goes up to twenty-two, we might then look at it and say, okay, there's three seats available in there. So that would be our space available. Because at the elementary, we literally look at it by grade level. So we look at each individual cohort in each school. So we literally have to go through twenty schools, seven grade levels, look at a hundred and forty cohorts, and decide where is there actual room for students.
So would you communicate that with the family that may have multiple kids in different grades? So if like the one one couldn't get in and.
Yes, and that is probably the hardest conversation we ever have to have. Yes, we have room for your third grader? No, we don't have room for your first grader? Yeah. And then, not uncommon for parents to come back to us and say, okay, fine, if that school doesn't have it, does the next school over have a first and a third grade opening? Because we frequently get people that are like, well, I'm, I live in North Liberty and I work in Iowa City and I wanna be able to drop my kid off on my way to school, pick him up on the way home, so I pick this school. That doesn't work, how about the next school over? So we tend to go through and look at that.
I just worry that when we get more and more and more exceptions and there's no, where there's, then we're doing this to do it, but then we're not really doing it.
Amy just says she's worried about all the applications we're gonna have to review.
I think that this is gonna cut out an awful lot. I mean, there's a lot of people that are. I know we're not asking the reasons, but based on the conversations I've heard, I think it's gonna cut out a lot of transfers.
So what was the drop-off year by year? We started requiring them to whatever.
Oh, huge. We cut it half.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were, we were close to sixteen hundred before.
And I'm thinking this is gonna do another big, you know, maybe on a half. But, and I, you know, here's where I'm, I mean, I like going across the net because Paul, I think to your point, that makes it less, it helps us toward our goal and it doesn't get all muddy. I, I'm empathetic to folks, you know, helping out folks who, who need, who need help or folks, you know, low SES. I don't know, you know, if this gets down that slippery slope. You say then that if you're high SES, which we're just calling that a high SES, and you can jump across the net, you know, I guess we could say if you're low SES, you could, you know, we make it more, you have another option, which could be, I don't know.
That's why I wrote it like this. You could do one, one way and one the other.
Right, and that's, that's, that's what I'm.
That's where you're heading.
That's where I'm heading with it. I'm sorry if I was making myself clear.
No, yeah.
But no, definitely, I think we're making a distinction.
But, but we aren't saying, what this says is you can only move to a school with a, a higher S, higher FRL, right? So we're not saying it goes the other way. So from.
We could, you know.
But we could say that. I'm just saying this policy says you can move from Alexander to Wood. You cannot move from Wood to Alexander, that's ridiculous.
Correct. That is correct.
And I think the other thing we're adding in, or that I mentioned is.
Wood to Alexander, not Alexander to Wood.
Right.
Yep.
And so, so that would be the thing, do you allow both ways?
Or is it allowed both ways only across the net or on one side of the net?
Yeah, or only allow both ways if you're low SES but not if you're high SES. Because my guess is if you're moving either from Wood to Alexander or Alexander to Wood, you're not, it's not for any of the reasons, it's not for any equity bounds. It's something more personal about your specific situation. And that is where I'm afraid we start going down that rabbit hole and everybody's gotta.
I would argue if you want to look at separate rationale, that if you looked at it from the standpoint of if you are a low SES student, provided that you are moving to a school that has a lower proportion of SES students, that move would be okay. So that way you are furthering the goal of equity in the district. So Kirkwood, you could move anywhere. Twain, you could move anywhere but Kirkwood. Wood, you could move anywhere but Kirkwood and Twain. Then you could go back and you could say for high SES students, back to Sean's earlier input, if you wanna see the greatest return from an equity standpoint, you can only go across the net.
My, my question though is, can, can, is that legal? I mean, to discriminate based on your income? To say if you can pay for lunch, you get this option. If you can't pay for lunch, you get that option. I mean, to me, it feels like it should be same rules, you know. I don't know, I have a hard time saying that. You hear what I'm saying?
I do.
My question, is any of this legal? Has Joe commented?
Joe says, Joe says yes at this point. Like I said, his tweaks so far are all language issues.
It would be anybody at Kirkwood.
So he green-lighted what I sent him first time around.
Fairly similar to what was the end of the year, right?
Yes, yeah. And he's reviewed the Davenport language too. He had, some of the observations that he made on the Davenport one were because it's also tied to their open enrollment. So that makes theirs a little different than ours because ours isn't obviously tied to open enrollment, so.
So I wanna make sure that that is my concern because I think we all, all are agreeing that you're low poverty students, you can go to a, across the line to a high FRL school. But have we also agreed that if you are a low, you are FRL eligible, you can go to a low poverty school across the net? Are we saying that that's humiliating? So then, that's, we're saying we cross the net for, you know, improving our equity goals, right? But that's fair.
So you're saying if you're in the bottom quadrant group and you are FRL?
No, I'm saying that if you're in the bottom quadrant group, you're in a high SES school, if you do not, if you do not, if you're not eligible for FRL and you go to one of these schools in the bottom half, you can voluntary transfer to one of the schools in the top half.
Right.
Okay. So for, if you're a student in the top half and you are eligible for FRL, you can transfer to one of the schools in the bottom half because we're gonna be promoting our equity goal. But what I'm trying to understand, the concern you were expressing around fairness around the rules, and I, I think it was in the context of you're in the top half and you're at Kirkwood, you can, you can transfer to Wood because that's marginally gonna help our, our equity goal. And that's where.
Lori's concern was if you do that, are you, is it differential treatment then for people who would be high SES students that wouldn't be allowed to transfer from Schumick to Van Allen?
No, 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 I'm still talking about it, but I'm, I'm saying if you are an FRL student, you can choose to go from Kirkwood to Twain. But if you are not an FRL student, you cannot choose to go from Kirkwood to Twain.
Correct.
But then.
I, I would.
That's the Davenport policy.
But if you're.
A students, B students. That's exactly what you shared with us.
Well, I.
But if you're, if you're a, if you're a, if you're an FRL student at Twain and you're leaving to go to Kirkwood, then you're just kinda flipping that so you're helping Twain technically, but you're.
No, no, you wouldn't be able to go to Kirkwood.
Go to Wood.
Yeah, that's what I said, Twain and Wood.
Oh, Twain and Wood, yeah.
Yeah, because that was the example you said, right? So a high, a FRL student could leave Twain and go to Wood.
Yeah.
Right? So that's.
Marginal change.
But I do see Lori's point. If you're not eligible for FRL and you're going to Twain, why couldn't you go transfer to Alexander?
Because then it's going backwards.
No, because you're not working towards achieving the equity goal of closing the gap.
That's going backwards, right? You have to be a high, you'd have to be a low poverty kid going from, say, Alexander to Kirkwood.
Yeah, high SES kids can only move up on this chart. And low SES kids can only move down on the chart. The question is.
And the truth is, where if we do that best policy or any policy or the current policy, somebody's getting their, somebody's getting bored. I mean, somebody's losing out. And right now, we know in some schools persistently for the past ten, twenty years, some large group of kids have, can persistently be missing out. And we're trying to just make that better. And so I, I am empathetic to all of the families in districts right now. And that isn't lost on me at all that these numbers represent families and kids. These numbers also represent families and kids ten years from now.
Right.
Because these numbers weren't that much different ten years ago. And so with not, nothing to say, well, everybody who has a little exception, we can go here for the daycare. I mean, these are the policies we're making and some, somebody's, and I guess I'm more comfortable with individuals sort of losing out when the greater goal is more of our kids who persistently lost out, that won't be their situation anymore. Because this is only one piece. Because eventually, if what we're doing works and we keep at the work, these numbers are gonna get closer to that. And that's what we're trying to do.
Absolutely.
And without some kind of policy, that's gonna be pretty prescriptive, like this bait, let you go to school. Or your ability to tran, because we could say no voluntary transfers, period. That's not something we're required by law to do. It's something we have chosen to continue. And probably many districts don't have voluntary transfer. Probably most districts don't have a voluntary transfer policy. Probably most districts didn't keep the assigned kids in their school and they just said, forget it. You're going to the school you're assigned to.
Sure.
And that is what we're saying, but we're also saying unless your moving helps these numbers, and then you get to make that choice or not to move. So, so I'm trying to balance this, you know, yes, our policies are gonna affect the people in our district right now and they're moving toward this goal of everybody being more equitable. And I don't, and I, and I don't wanna get too nitty-gritty, you know, too every single, you know, because you think, well, yeah, maybe you can move up within this category of the lowest. I kinda like, to me, the simplicity of if you're below this line and you're a high E SES, you can move above the line. And if you're above this line and you're low SES, you can move below the line. And that is simple. And some people are gonna be affected by that in a negative way, and I understand that. But I also have to remember, there's currently people being affected in a negative way with our, the way things are. And, and, and that's every time people come and say, but here's what this is gonna do to my family. I wanna say, but there's families right now that don't even get that choice for whom they don't have equitable learning environment. So I am balancing your personal situation with the policy that is, this overarching thing. And that feels, this feels simpler than the Davenport one, but I.
Tried to.
Yeah, yeah, it's just, I think it'd be easier to comprehend. You see that line. I don't, it'll be interesting to see, this is gonna change next October.
It will substantially. You're gonna see that when we look at the attendance areas.
And people are gonna be upset with that. Well, you said it now. And I think, I think hopefully what all of these policies are doing is they're driving people to go to school that there's no. And, and we'll try to do the work to help you, to help those schools be more equitable. But if you're somebody who wants to help, and that's the feedback we've gotten. The people who've said that they're moving from low ES to high SES to a person has been like, because we want that, like, they, they see it the way we want them to see it. They see our high SES school as positive for their kids. That they get a better benefit than being at a low SES school and they've made that choice. And I think we wanna support that. We wanna say, yes, because you, oh yeah. You, we can talk about test scores, achievement gap, but, but what we know is, you're, or what some people have believed and do is this diverse environment is better overall for my child than a segregated environment where maybe we do have access to more programming or whatever it might be that, that they get there that isn't at the other school. So somebody's access getting moved forward no matter what we do.
Can I just throw up just an idea that would complicate it, but just to see if it makes sense to anybody other than me. We have a RAM model that has three tiers, right? And there's a pretty significant change. Even looking at these numbers, right? Dropping the seventies down to the fifties.
Yep.
I'm just, is there a way that you could have three levels? Because if you were going from, say, Alexander to Lucas, which are right next to each other on these, but with very significant difference in numbers, would that be going in the right direction? I don't know if there's a way to have the three tiers that's directly related to our RAM model.
I'd estimate it, but that's pretty straightforward, I mean, that's.
So you could move, instead of two, you have three.
Yeah, I don't.
Do you have to cross a line?
Yeah.
Or two lines?
Because there are, those lines are actually pretty stark.
Bare.
Lucas and Allen are very stark and then also on the other end. Well, it doesn't, it's a little.
And hopefully with our new boundaries, which we haven't seen yet, but hopefully they'll be closer.
And hopefully they'll be even closer.
And I would suggest that we not use the twenty-seventeen, eighteen numbers to make next year's decisions.
No, we won't. This is all I had access to when I wrote it up, so.
And, and I know that. I'm just saying that like if we can use whatever, whatever we end up with on the boundaries, the projected numbers.
We'll do live-in numbers for you on that. We just, I didn't wanna get too far out in front of that this time around. And then in future years, we'd use the certified enrollment, but this time we use the live-in.
I think it makes sense, although I guess I would fault on keeping it simple now and seeing what the other things do to the numbers. And then as we move forward, this board and future boards can say, hey, how do we tweak this?
Well, you have an idea how many voluntary transfer students there are.
And then we'll have more data to say, hey, we could put it in.
I agree, and as, we, we are trying to move it towards the average. The only reason for that is because we were, we were looking, you know, at an example of going, you know, seventy-six point five, seven, seventy-six point three-two.
Yeah.
Right, like, that doesn't help the overall goal. But going from seventy, seventy to fifty-six.
Yes.
That would, but they're on the same side of the line. So I was just trying to figure out a way, is there a way to make that make sense, but, yeah.
Plus, I think we, at some point, we're going to have a discussion on RAM and that there's going to be a fourth tier.
Fourth tier. I'd like to see that there's a, so.
Yeah, and hopefully what you do is, yeah, hopefully the work just moves it to where those become easier conversations. Because they aren't. Because gosh, when you, you know, when you, yeah, when you see it on the graph or here, you know, seventy-nine and nine, that we're talking about.
And those two schools are two of our closest schools.
Yes.
So you need some.
So the italicized language is the one we like at this point, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so like I said, Joe's got a couple of suggestions for me for language cleanup that he wants in there. Other than that, that looks pretty good. So if you would, I'd just take you back to page two just for a moment. And again, this was, because we had a couple of people ask about this. So just some housekeeping, if you will, required on an annual basis. Required one for each student. Where you can find them, I'm in that middle set of bullets there. It doesn't provide any guarantee beyond the one year. Doesn't guarantee anything in the feeder system for junior high or high school. You provide your own transportation. Again, that voluntary transfer deadline mirroring the open enrollment on March 1st gives you an idea what we do with the applications that come in after March 1st. Down at the bottom, and again, we pulled most of this off the current form. Subject cancellation if the district changes transfer policies, if the district changes boundaries or attendance areas, if there's a change in student transportation needs. And actually, one of the questions that was raised, just so you know, that's often used not by the district, but by the parents who come in and say, I would like to rescind my voluntary transfer because transportation has become a burden for me and I would like my student to return to their home attendance area. So that transportation one's not an. So that transportation one's not an us issue, but a parent issue, so we have that in there.
I have a question for you about that.
Yeah.
But what if you have a child on the voluntary transfer list, the parent is responsible for getting them to school, they're having attendance issues?
Yep.
So as a district, do you?
We can.
Is that a dis- district issue?
We intervene, it's usually an opportunity for student family, advocate or somebody like that to step in and say, hey, can we better understand what the issue is? And that's often where the parents say, ah, everything was working great. My job changed, my transportation changed, it's not working so well anymore. Maybe I want to rescind my voluntary transfer request, how do I go about doing that so I can return my child to the home of school? And then that last one, this came up, people asked about this at a couple of tables and one side conversation. So just a reminder, verification that transfer, uh, transfer request information that's provided was accurate. If not, we can rescind it, all right?
I'm wondering if we could add in, be aware of the following under that. I know we don't have it in writing, but our general practice has been when a new school opens, everybody goes there the first year. That is not included anywhere in this.
I could put that in right as a sub-bullet underneath the second bullet on there, where it says, change the boundaries and attendance areas, because that's really what we're talking about there. Yep?
Yeah, because that came up at my table that.
Yep, that's a good idea, I'll put that in as a sub-bullet.
That's not written down anywhere, but people need to know that you move into a new school area, you're going there the first year.
And then just the form down below, fairly straightforward, just a quick reminder for you, because we had a couple of people ask about this. So if you look at the very last yes/no box there, does your student meet one of the expectations, exceptions? So those are the ones that obviously are listed above, whether it's grandfather, new, and then provide your documentation goes along with that. So that's how people go about doing that. I know Joe has also asked for another box on there, so you'll see that, which is, do you disclose, do you agree to the disclosure of your F R L information or something like that? So, you'll see, you'll see another box on there. Even though he said, if I don't have to have it, he said, be nice to have it again.
Thank goodness.
I will be adding that to it. All right?
One question, one comment.
Yeah.
Do they have to have filled out the application for F R L or just need the qualification?
That's actually another one that Joe had on there, so be eligible for. Doesn't mean you have it, be eligible for.
And the other comment, and this came from somebody at my table, is there a short version that you could put on here of what the yield process is? Like just a few steps? I mean, you fill the application, they're going to get a year or a name, but like all in one spot?
Yep, and I probably put it up above, so it's up, oops, sorry, up here.
It'd have to be very detailed or whatever the next step is.
Yeah, we can just put that right in here. All right, no yawn and fall, we got lots more work to do.
All right, I think this was a really good conversation, I'll be ready to move to the next.
I, I want to say one more thing on this. We have no more time to discuss this before we're planning to vote on it. I just want to reserve the option that if new information becomes available or, you know, there's something out there that happens that I may find myself uncomfortable voting. This came this afternoon, I've had very little opportunity to reflect upon it. I oftentimes have the day-after moments when I go, aha, I hadn't thought of that. So, I just want to say that it's, it's a really hard position to vote on something when we have no other opportunity after we've discussed it one time. So, just going to share that.
Well, we can discuss it, we can, should discuss it, maybe not this.
But there wouldn't be any opportunity to amend it or change it at that point.
So we could have it as a next, now we could discuss it if there are reservations because of new information or something, and.
Table it.
We table the vote.
And I, yeah, that's my question for the process, so we table the vote, put it off and not start amending from the vote.
No.
We have not.
That gets.
No.
I think that it's messy, I would prefer to, I would prefer to postpone the vote for the next meeting, discuss it at work session, get all the topics out, hammering it through.
So let's keep it on the work session agenda, just as a placeholder. And that way we can talk about it, or we can just vote and move on.
I left it on the thirty and the sixth, so it's uncoachable.
Great.
Next one, you got the PowerPoint in front of you, oops.
It's so small, I can't read it, no mind.
I know. Not the only one, I can't read it myself, I was trying to read it earlier today and I couldn't read it, so I'm going to blow it up for you here.
Thank you.
So, oops. So what you have, oops, get back in there. So, actually I'll stand up here, it'll be easier. Wow, that doesn't help with the line anymore. All right, so right here, this is our two thousand seventeen, eighteen data. So you can see the enrollment, so those are the kids that were there October first last year. You can see the number of low S E S students using those three categories. And you can see the percentages. The darkest green have the highest percentage of low S E S, and the lightest green have the lowest number of S E S. You see that Graham and American Legion Hoover have no numbers in there because they didn't have kids last fall. Here are the capacity numbers as they existed last fall, and then the capacity utilization. So again, if you go across to Garner and you see they're at almost one hundred and thirty-one percent and way over capacity, you get too many kids out there, you see Lucas is over capacity, et cetera, so that was last fall. Working on this fall's numbers, have that here shortly, be able to update this. Cast forward to two thousand nineteen, twenty, these are the kids who live in those attendance areas. And of the students who live in those attendance areas, based on their F R L reporting numbers from last year, what would those numbers look like? And what would your low S E S number look like for next fall, right? And that's based on our live-in kids who live in that attendance area. So, that gives us an idea of if those attendance areas that were voted on in fifteen, sixteen and put in play for nineteen, twenty, were requiring all students who live in that attendance area to go to school in that attendance area, that gives us what an S E S number looks like for those schools. So you can see that there's some changes as you go across and look at those. Maybe one of the ones that you might look at from a standpoint of the numbers change fairly substantially and the low S E S numbers change. So if you look at Kirkwood, there's three hundred and fifty-two, can't see the line there. Three hundred and fifty-two kids at Kirkwood, of whom seventy-nine and a half percent are low S E S. If you did the live-in numbers, there's four hundred and nineteen kids that live in the Kirkwood attendance area. So there's obviously quite a few kids who are voluntarily transferring out. And you see that the low S E S number goes down about four percentage points. So what that leads you to believe is those kids that are going out have a higher S E S status than the kids who are staying, because it's bringing that number down when you look at that. So, that gives you the idea of where the kids are. We're going to walk you through a bunch of proposed changes based on the building blocks that we've been talking about over the last couple of months. That big one at the top there with Alexander is our Lakewood kids. So we're going to, I'm going to walk through all of these with you, but these are the proposed changes based on the building blocks. So if you apply those changes and you move those students to and from, this is what the enrollment numbers would look like. This is what your low S E S numbers and your percentage would look like. And this is the capacity, now I went all the way up to twenty-one, twenty-two. So this is the end of the facilities master plan, all right? Because if we're looking at making some changes and they're going to sit in place for a while, what will it look like, given the, the extra capacity that we'll have in those buildings by the time we get done with the facility master plan? So we've got an idea of where the space is as we come in and close in on that. You can see, the good news with this is unlike back in seventeen, eighteen, nobody's over a hundred percent. You can see Borlaug's awfully close. But you can also see that some of our higher need schools are now significantly lower in capacity. I think that's really important, because one of the things that we do with capacity is when we measure it, we want to know a classroom in every building, what it looks like in terms of how many kids get in a hole compared to every other building. So we don't say, oh, that's a RAM one school, that can only hold this many kids. That's a RAM three school, it can hold this many kids. We say a classroom is a classroom is a classroom, that's the capacity of that building. The challenge with that is, when you take a school like Alexander and you say it's got capacity for five hundred and seventy-five kids, that's a twenty-five kids per classroom. But if we are using RAM and we're putting substantially smaller classes in there, that's why you wind up with portals outside of Alexander, and you have the end, open spaces closed in. So we were very deliberate when we did this to try to make sure that a school like Alexander, you'll see, you look at it like, oh my goodness, it's only a fifty-eight percent capacity. But as a RAM one school, that means that we have the flexibility to have the smaller class sizes in there, given the spaces available. Twain's another good example. So you come across Twain, you look at Twain, it's sixty-four percent over here. Over here it's at ninety-four percent. Ninety-four percent, you'd say, oh, well, that's, that's not too bad, Twain's doing all right. But if you're at Twain, you'll find out that we actually built an E L L classroom in the library, and half of the rest of the library is actually blocked off right now with portable walls, so we knew Title I and reading recovery instruction in there, because there isn't enough space anywhere else in the school, and arts on a cart. So the art classroom actually has a regular gen ed classroom inside of it. So even though it says ninety-four percent capacity is a RAM one school, it's got too many kids in it. Lori?
What's kind of the percentage capacity that a RAM one school would be full at?
Adam and I looked at it when we were going through it, if we get to the eighty percent number, we're getting full at a RAM one school. Eighty, eighty-two percent, we're getting full. So, we were very deliberate, so when you look at our RAM schools, I know it's kind of hard to see all the way across here, but you know, you see Twain here, we're looking at Wood down here, seventy-four percent. Come up here to Lucas, that's dropping on a RAM two, it's at eighty-four percent. Come up here to Kirkwood, it's seventy percent. So we really deliberately tried to take our RAM one and our RAM two schools and push them down in our capacity, so that there's a little bit more flexibility. Our RAM three schools, like I said, Borlaug's at ninety-nine percent, clearly not ideal. Garner's at ninety-four percent. Drop down as you're looking over here. Penn is low, but part of that's because of that whole rezoning with Grant up there. Van Allen, eighty-one percent, so we've got some room to grow up in some of those areas, so we also took that into consideration as we were looking at how we staff those out. So you may want to come back to this, you may want to have me come back to this chart, but I'd like to walk you through the building blocks. These are all going to look familiar to you for the most part, there's a couple adjustments in there, but I think you're going to see lots of familiarity as we go through there. I included these numbers on those building blocks so that you have them for reference, so you don't always have to feel bad to them. I think I need to shrink this down. Oh, first I got a few charts for you to look at. And you may want to just hang on to these and save them for reference later, but. So this one right here that you're looking at shows you your low S E S comparison. The data point that's highlighted there, the label, that is the nineteen, twenty number. So what you can see there is going across each attendance area has three numbers. Maybe Longfellow might be a good one to look at right here in the middle. So when you look at Longfellow, in seventeen, eighteen, you can see the F R L percentage. Here's the live-in percentage with the new boundaries that were voted on in sixteen going to play in the fall of nineteen. This would be the number if the revision for the attendance area and the change with adding Lakewood is taken into play. So you can see the difference, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, nineteen, twenty, with whatever changes we're looking at on the building blocks right now. So if you look at your grade going across, and this chart is rank order, left to right, high to low, based on that grade bar, so the revised attendance areas. Look at that, you've got that chart in there. Your next one down here, maybe makes a little bit more sense for you. This is who sees the major changes. So, looking on your left there, you see Lincoln sees a thirty-point-seven percent increase in low S E S students. Go all the way down to the other end, you see Mann sees a twenty-nine percent decrease in low S E S students. And again, that's that change in that, major change in that attendance area in the center of the Lincoln-Mann area. If you go over there on the left, you see Longfellow's got a fairly substantial increase at seventeen and a half. Hoover sees a change of eight-three, and that's from its original numbers over there. Horn, eight-three, Garner, seven-seven. Coming over here, we've got Penn, Twain, Lucas, and then you drop down Kirkwood, Wood, Schimick. So now, oh, capacity, I'm going to go walk past capacity. But you've got all those numbers out there. And then, take a look at some maps. So Alexander, the, if you, on every one of the maps that you see, if you look to the right there, that one arrow is pointing at the fine red line. The fine red line is the board-approved nineteen, twenty attendance areas. That yellow line are proposed changes to the attendance areas. So if you look at this, I'll use this one, we'll just use it as an example as we go through it. This line is our proposed change to the attendance area. So the big change out here is you see Lakewood, and Lakewood was included in Alexander in nineteen, twenty, and you can see that we cut that off. Okay, so what does that mean for Alexander? It means that their low S E S numbers would go from seventy-point-six down to sixty-eight-point-six. They would lose a hundred and fourteen students to Longfellow. Probably one of the biggest changes for Alexander is the school be closer to right size now from a capacity standpoint. So, far less crowding than they have. So that was that, again, that was one of the building blocks that you've talked about at length. Where does Lakewood go? The attendance area is the same itself right now, with the exception of the change of the students to Lakewood.
And Lakewood's students are currently at Twain.
Currently at Twain, they were zoned to Alexander, and we actually then proposed moving them to Longfellow. Borlaug, a big change for Borlaug, we moved, if you look down below, ninety-two students from Kirkwood. So that's the area up here, that's your Boston Way neighborhood. I proposed moving those down to Borlaug, that's ninety-two students. Borlaug was already close to capacity, so we had to move kids out, we have ninety-three kids moving out. We'll see them in subsequent maps, but you have this group down here. So you've got these students that are going to Horn, and then the students that are south of Rare Road going to Weber. So you've got twenty-three students to Weber and seventy to Horn. So, we did that because simply moving those kids out of Kirkwood and into Borlaug then tipped that domino over for us.
And the kids at Boston Way currently get attendance support bussing?
They do get attendance support bussing at this time. Yes. Corralville Central, so one of the things that we were looking at with Corralville Central after the revisions is what was the capacity of the building versus the number of students that were there. The goal is to try to move some students out of Corralville Central. We saw that there was some space available at Wickham, so you can see we've moved the students that are in this area right here out to Wickham. I think some of you are aware that they're doing some development up here. And so that then won't put that additional pressure on Corralville Central, because they're already at that tipping point of being overcrowded in the building. And you can see that that also has a significant impact on their S E S status, moving them from fifty-point-one down to forty-four-point-five. Hills, an interesting conversation with the staff at Hills. So one of the things that I'll tell you that they raised as a concern was not getting too small, because when they get too small, they lose economies of scale. And we've got some longtime staff members out there who've been through that, and they know that. So, we had a long conversation about it, I'd originally proposed removing some additional students from Hills just because of how full the school is. And they did a very nice job of helping me understand that was an error in thinking, and so I did not do that in this one. You can see that the one change that we have is the students that are up here, and there's very few of them, they're fewer than twenty, so we didn't identify the number. Those students are part of that move to Longfellow, and that's as we take the students that are in Lakewood and move them up there. Obviously not a very substantial increase in their F R L numbers, because it's not very many kids. The new Hoover, when it opens up, it'll open up with forty-three percent low S E S students. In this case, there are two major changes, one you won't see on here, but you'll see it when we get to Lemmy, and that's the students that are in Breckenridge. So those students who were originally zoned to come to Hoover, we're proposing that instead they stay at Lemmy Elementary School. And then in order to backfill the students that we lost there, these students up here that are in Lemmy right now, so you see the red attendance line from nineteen, twenty, propose moving that, I think we called it East Lemmy, moving those kids into Hoover. And then the students that are right over here, students that are right here, this is Bon Air. And the students in Bon Air would also wind up going to Hoover when it opens up. So that means that's. So, that means that's the Breckenridge students, those are 44 kids that would go from Hoover to Lemmy. The 29 students that would go from Lemmy to Hoover are in that, I probably do it up here, there we go, they're in that East Lemmy area. And then, we've got 37 students that right now are zoned to Wood that would go to Hoover. So, and that would help us, that'll help us substantially when we get to look at Wood and look at the numbers there. This gives us Hoover opening up at 43%, right near that district average, so we thought that was positive.
And Borlaug?
Yep. Horn, I mentioned that Horn, and maybe just a quick refresher for you, so Horn saw a pretty substantial drop in attendance this year, and we're still working on the rationale for that. Part of it's the neighborhood aging out based on feedback we're getting from Kristin Cannon and the folks over at Horn. So, we know there's some space available at Horn. So, if you're familiar with this, here's Pheasant Ridge, which is assigned to Weber right now. If you know that area, you're on Mormon Trek, there's a fairway right here, UI Credit Union. So, you're looking at the area south of that. There's multiple apartment buildings that are south of Fairway there. So, those students would come to Horn if you know that area. It's got some lower socioeconomic status families in there, so you're going to see the SES number at Horn move from 43.2 to 51.5. So, it goes up a little bit. But again, when we're looking at our surrounding schools and how does that help us keep that balance in there, we thought that that would work in terms of how we move those kids around between Borlaug and Horn. And then, maybe just for reference for you, this section right here, that's the section that goes to Weber. So, this brown right now is Weber, so you're going to see that this area right across Mormon Trek and south of that area that goes to Horn gets reassigned to Weber. And again, that's to make room for our students in Boston Way.
Can you tell me again what, where Fairway is in that?
Sure, it's right here where my cursor is.
Okay, so this is like the condos?
So, this is the apartments that are...
The yellow condos.
Yeah.
I don't know what else to call them, by Walden Place.
Yeah, and it's all the apartment complexes that are behind Come and Go.
Okay.
So, if you think about that, so Benton, Dead End, so here's Benton, runs right into it. So, literally, there's a little pond and a Come and Go right there where the cursor Kirkwood, so this is what happens to Kirkwood when Boston Way is pulled out. You see them move from 79.5 to 73.5. So, we've got a fairly substantial impact on that. Also, we're going to see much nicer live-in numbers in terms of capacity for the building. There's 92 students that are out there in that Boston Way neighborhood that would move then down to Borlaug. Lemmy, so here's where you can see Breckenridge. It looks kind of goofy because there's so many dots out here, but that's because the concentration, the cluster of students is so tight. If you've ever been out there and seen Breckenridge, it's a very small geographic area, a lot of kids in it. So, those are the students that says current Lemmy students. They're zoned to new Hoover right now. So, this would be a change, so they're current Lemmy students, they would simply stay at Lemmy. So, that's those 44 students. And then, the 29 students are the students that are up here in what we called a few months ago that East Lemmy block that we looked at. And so, then that takes Lemmy from 29.3 to 29.1, so fairly even trade, if you will, as those students go back and forth. Longfellow, pretty substantial change for Longfellow. And again, we've got the Lakewood area right here, and if you follow that red line across, that was zoned to Alexander in 1920. Now, goes up to Longfellow, scoops a few kids from Twain and a few kids from Hills as they go in there to create that new attendance area. Takes Longfellow from 26.5 to 44, so you think about where new Hoover's at, some of the rest of that, you're kind of hitting some of that sweet spot right near the district Twain, so Twain right now sees two really substantial changes. The first one is right-sizing the number of kids for the building, which we know we're struggling with, again, art on a cart, all that mess going on in the library. But then, also a really substantial change in the low SES numbers from 77.9 to 66.5. So, that's a really substantial change for that population and for that school. Weber, it's a little harder to see here just because that Weber attendance area is so big, but again, this is that area that, so here's Horn Elementary Attendance Area that comes up, this is Borlaug coming down. This is the area right here, can you see that fine red line? So, that fine red line, that was the former Borlaug area that we'd recommend moving to Weber. It would also join this area here that's already at Weber. So, if you know that area, right on the corner of Rarit and Mormon Trek, there's a whole bunch of apartments that are right there. They empty out both onto, there's an entrance on Mormon Trek and an entrance on Rarit, and so those students would go up Rarit to Weber. So, from a proximity standpoint, obviously, it's closer for them to go there than it is to go to Borlaug, and that's 23 students that were there.
Would that be the same for busing? Do they get bused to Borlaug?
Um, I don't know. I don't know that. I'd have to look. That's a good question.
They're at Borlaug today?
They're at Borlaug today, but I don't know if they're farther than two miles.
I guess I wasn't that busing.
They don't get attendance support busing, no. It's the question of whether they get regular busing or not. Wickham, so again, this area here that, we used the railroad as a divider before, this now follows the road down. If you're familiar with this area out here, we've got a couple hotels out there and a couple of apartment complexes behind that. So, that area that's south of Oakdale, which may be opening up for development, then would feed into Wickham, which has some additional capacity there, and it takes us, we get a little bump, not much, but we could get a 1% bump in our low socioeconomic status. Now, we put that new, what is that one up there?
Bridgewater?
Yes.
It's mixed housing.
It's lots of stuff.
Lots of stuff, yes.
It's the way we would book the new municipal building moving forward, little senior housing, some apartments.
It'll be similar to Bozark Ridge with some senior housing.
Yeah, yep. Bozark Ridge with senior housing, that's a great way to describe it.
Could there be potentially some?
Yes, there could. There could, yeah.
Probably not allowed up to that.
They have to have, I think they have to have 10% low-income housing is the Corralville requirement.
Low-income?
What's that?
Affordable.
Affordable, sorry, you're right.
That's different.
All right, you're right. That's very different. Wood, and so you can see Woods at 76.6 down to 70.8. This is Bon Air right here. I do know from having some conversations with them, there's actually some question about whether or not we ought to look at some of this area too, only because there's capacity at new Hoover, and the question is, did we get low enough at Wood to truly accommodate the RAM1 staffing there? So, I'm going to take another look at that. I knew this was our first look at it, got to present it to the board on Tuesday night when we actually have a board meeting, and we'll have this there. That might be the only change that you see from the maps here right now. The rest of the maps, we've been through several times. We're just not sure about this, and part of it's to make sure that we don't have to use any non-traditional classroom space at Wood in order to accommodate the students that are there using RAM1 staffing, so.
And just some perspective on that one, because I asked you about it, and we kind of had a little small conversation, but that area, when I went to Lucas, was at Lucas, and there's only one entry and exit, which is up to the Highway 6, so it's, you can't get west.
You can't, you can't go around to get there, yeah. So, we're going to, we're taking another look at that. Joe and I had a conversation about that. We're going to follow up on that this week. So, before we post anything, we'll have that one resolved. And what, I don't know for sure, because I wasn't, I was just free-handing it in the software, but that would actually push Wood down below 70%. So, you'd see the same kind of change here. We're seeing it at Twain, if indeed it's appropriate for us under that neighborhood too. So, if that happens, our two biggest areas of return would be Twain and Wood, which would be really nice to see.
And Longfellow, you know.
Yep, yep. Okay, there's your building blocks. So, remember, we actually have the presentation on this, is at the board meeting on Tuesday night, but we just wanted to get this out in front of you now so you can take a look at it. Be more than happy to answer any questions you have now, or as Lori says, you get home afterwards and think of other things.
It's the morning after for me.
Is it really moving us in the right direction?
We think so, yes.
I think it's really making, and maybe there's tweaks and stuff that we need to keep moving through that.
Well, and if you do this, then what are the tweaks next year, or tweaks in the future? You know, as we see new numbers and things change, then, you know, I think there are some things down the road that, you know, maybe sort of set precedent, I guess.
You just, so, maybe you can cover it, but it will be presentation, so everyone knows, at the next meeting.
So, it's the presentation on the 23rd, work session, obviously, discussion at the 13th.
At the board table.
At the board table, and then work session, and then vote on the 27th, if we're feeling like we're ready to get there. I know Amy's getting twitchy.
I like that we have a barrier between her and I when we talk about work sessions.
If we're wanting to make these changes for fall of '19, we will discuss, and we really need to put our heads down and work through this process to get the vote forward, and that's what we're going to do.
Yeah, because there's a lot of...
There's a lot of communication.
A lot of staff work, a lot of communication, because we want to be able to give our families as much communication as possible.
Keep in mind, and this was something that Amy raised with me and with the elementary principals during our level meeting, these aren't all the changes, because remember, the 1920 maps already had a bunch of changes in them. So, we originally thought that there might be four schools that had no impact with it, now that's zero. So, every school has some kids that are going to move, so that's where communication really becomes key.
This is a big deal, I mean, this has been consistently been at both the session last Thursday, email, communication, this thing's stopping, IB, et cetera. There is a population of our parents who are very concerned that we're moving too fast with these kinds of changes next year. And so, my response to everyone who's asked me is there's a sense of urgency to try to begin moving in the right direction because we have immediate need that we need to address this board feels a sense of urgency. That's why we're moving quickly, and so that's why we need to get to a vote so that we can start the planning process, until communication, understanding all the implications, but I just, I have to put that out there, we need to make sure we're committed to moving at this pace and working through the work sessions and presentation on the next meeting, discussion, and then the vote, where we're not going to get this done for '19. And we will get lots of folks saying, slow down, slow down, slow down. We just need to stay really committed to pushing this through. So, another question I have is, and I think it was the right call to do the votes about the community session last Thursday, and I appreciate those who really wish to do that because I was sort of wondering, am I going to change? Always listening to some community members is positive. I actually didn't have anyone who wanted to talk about voluntary transfer, everyone at my table was talking about parents, concerned about that. But anyway, do we want to try to have a community session, a listening post on these boundary proposals? I kind of think we have to.
I'd say more than one.
And so, we're going to be voting on the Tuesday after Thanksgiving, we're going to have the committee scheduled, organized, as I can, I know that's not working for us and everyone in logistics, but I think it's the right thing.
Given the content for the work sessions on the 6th and the 13th, the 30th and the 6th, there's not a lot more that we need to bring to you. You may have more things that you need from us, but that issue was brought up both last Thursday and while we were talking about this, about the need to have some community input sessions. So, one thing to think about is whether or not, because of your schedules and trying to make sure that we're maintaining some level of respect for your life outside of being board members, about whether or not you might want to use those Tuesdays for your community input.
Would that sound great?
They're the 30th and the 6th. We're blessed October has a 5th Tuesday.
I mean, it's not a bad idea if we, what if we schedule?
Six is not a good idea, yeah. The six would not be good.
That's a good time to be bringing the community, and I think we should stick up for that one.
So, but the 30th, perhaps?
When are we going to?
That's a Tuesday, right?
But when are we going to talk about any tweaks that we would have to do this, or is this the final product?
No, 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 this is, we're going to present this on Tuesday. So, that's to get it on camera.
And then, we've got a work session up here, where this will be the topic of conversation.
Then, we've got work session discussion on this on next Tuesday, 23rd. And I've got it listed on the 30th and on the 6th, with discussion at the board table again on camera on the 13th.
So, I like to use the 30th for...
With a vote on the 27th.
If we use the 30th for, instead of a work session, we use it for listening posts, so we had one work session on holiday, which was on the 23rd, so we've had some discussion after digesting this. Then, we use the 6th, the board meeting on the 6th, we don't want the community to do this election night, or the work session at night, but we can talk about the input that we got from the community on the 30th. And then, based on that conversation, if you feel like you need to have another community session, it's sometime after the 6th to try to...
But then, it gives you an opportunity on the 13th to have another on-camera discussion. So, you're at the board meeting with the discussion with the decision then not till the 27th.
So, am I not allowed to bring something up here looking at?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
You know, I went all the way back after looking at all the maps, back to the, looking at the, kind of the capacity usage and where the numbers are, and kind of the right capacity for what level of RAM you're at and everything. We had brought this up previous work sessions with kind of the changes to Lincoln and Mann, and it's pretty stark looking at Mann's 19% SES and only using 52% of its capacity. It seems like there's something better you can do with that space. And if, you know, looking at Lincoln, right, it's the one that kind of flip-flop numbers, right? Their numbers don't look as bad, you know, 40% SES, that's right the average, but it's getting up there at 84% capacity.
Yep.
I mean, that's where a big chunk of kids move, right, between those two. It seems like only having half a school full with less than 20% SES is not really helping the rest of it, so I would at least look at something there.
Well, we, I mean, we talked about it before, but just, and maybe, Steve, you could do the Forest Edge, we know it may be going away anyway, but, yeah.
So, if that was something that you wanted to look at, that is the apartment complex in Forest View, so very few kids there. More appropriately, that is the Forest View Trailer Court, so you can see there's 46 kids there. So, if that was something that I actually anticipated that might be a question that would come up today, so there's your building block for Forest View.
So, you do there is you...
Keep them at Mann.
...Mann similar to what it is now, with frankly, better capacity because of the renovations, and you kind of Lincoln where it is now.
Not necessarily, because it's not, yeah, you're still seeing, it's only, it's only a portion of that whole group that's going.
Yeah, you'd see their SES numbers at Lincoln go up, and you'd see them come down a little bit at Mann and where they're at right now, you know. You'd see the two of them get a little bit tighter on both capacity and SES differential, so you tighten that block a little.
Because Mann currently has all of the peninsula, right?
It does.
And they're going to Lincoln, so it's only taking, cutting off the top half of that.
So, I anticipated that based on feedback at these other sessions, so I pulled that in.
And the other thing, the other positive thing about keeping it at Mann is if they are moving anyway, fewer transitions now, and who knows?
This would be like a Breckenridge, if you think about it. This would be like Breckenridge, you'd say, they stay at Mann, the surrounding area, just like in new Hoover, that goes to Lincoln, but that group stays at Mann.
I just, I was thinking about that particular area before this, but seeing the 52% capacity number, using half the school like stands out as...
Brand-new school. That we made bigger on purpose. My concern is just that if we want tweaks, that, so, I can't give you tweaks tonight, I got this. You know, I have time, I mean, we had no time to digest this ahead since we weren't, because we didn't get it ahead. So, I'm not going to know my tweaks till possibly the end of this week. You're not going to be able to get me that information by Tuesday. Let's be real. I mean, that's too much to ask. So, and I'm just talking one person, there's seven of us, so times seven. So, we have one discussion next week, and then we go to the community? I mean, I feel like we need to have several discussions before we go to the community. I'm not opposed to having a community meeting on a night that's not a Tuesday. I know that's a lot for us, but I feel like it's, I don't know. We're not going to be able to see the information from you next week, and then we don't have any other time to discuss it before we go to the community, if we go to the community on the 30th. We're not going to be able to see the information from you next week and then we don't have any other time to discuss it before we go to the community, if we go to the community on the thirtieth.
I'm okay with more meetings. I'm probably not going to have a whole lot of tweaks for you at all. Just my own thing and if, I don't, I don't know. Are you going to have, I know you haven't looked at it enough, but I would imagine there are going to be like huge changes that you wouldn't be able to work on. Maybe a fine tuning here and there.
I mean, if there aren't a lot of them, yeah, we can do them.
I'm just trying to balance the need to get community input sooner or later.
Oh, I say go for community input on November first. I mean, we can get it that same week. I just feel like the board needs more time before we go to the community and say, this is essentially what we have. But we've kind of talked about this other thing, but we haven't really seen the information yet. And what do you think? And I don't know. I just feel like we need to get our stuff together before we.
Remember for Thursday, like we did last week, Thursday session.
I hate to be a downer, guys.
Well, I guess I'm in the boat of, you know, I made my one point that stood out to me today. Just look at the numbers and maybe I'll see something else as I look farther forward. But as Steve mentioned, we discussed at least half of these areas we would want to move and kind of discussed where they would go. And the back half of it is how to accommodate some of those moves. And so, I mean, I'll look at it to make sure it makes sense, but it's a numbers game at that point. So I'm not likely to have a lot of change myself. And part of that is probably a bit of ignorance of the neighborhoods themselves to know, okay, if I just carve this little piece out, what do I do? I don't know that I even have that information. So I'm going to look at, my process is going to be kind of look at the final product and see, okay, does that look like a school that, you know, has numbers that are at least moving in the right direction? And right size, right SES numbers and things like that. I don't know that I'm going to change it by ten, twelve students at a time. I just don't have that understanding and I know a lot of people have much better understanding than I have heard of this. But I think the big pieces, we did talk about quite a bit, so where they're going to go. So I want to look at the other dominoes in a little more detail.
There's some big ones that have been added that we've never seen before and we're going to get feedback. And I'm not saying that it's not a good plan. I'm just saying that there's some things in here that have never been seen before. And I feel like I need to talk to people in the community and hear what they have to say before I can even say to you, these are my questions. So.
I don't, I don't have a little preference. Thirtieth, first, it would be comfortable taking as much time as we have to work session to discuss before we have a community session on November third. And we can hold it back and we've got the board members who are going to attend on the first. I don't think this is our, let me just decide tonight so we can start giving promotions in place to be able to, on your, then they will.
The other thing I want to be.
I'm probably not going to have big changes, but I'm a little bit different from you too. I would always be comfortable taking out what we saw tonight in the community because there's just been a lot of, to get the input. There's a proposal and here's what it's looking like. And we're getting your input and what ideas and views to have and what implications have we not considered that we need to hear about. So I actually would be looking at what we have to a community session.
And that would be an option too. We could have a community session, but I feel like then we need more community sessions because we give the impression of we're not really interested in feedback if we just take this out without. I mean, it didn't even get to the public. I don't, I mean, it's on board docs now, but you know.
We've got it. We've got this presented next Tuesday. We have a work session next Tuesday on the twenty-third. If we did something on the thirtieth, we will have had a public discussion and another work session on this. And so for me, it's a two-day difference. It's whether we're committed to being there on the thirtieth and if it's comfortable taking on the thirtieth, I'm perfectly comfortable taking on the thirtieth. As I said, I would be comfortable taking what we have today in the spirit of listening and learning from the community. And so I guess my practice would be to do it on the thirtieth if it's time and you already locked and you've already scheduled yourselves around that, but if.
I'm frankly just not available on the first. So that, I mean, I don't.
I'm not either.
My wife's out of town, so I'm really, extra not available.
Well, we don't want to do the thirty-first.
No, we can't.
So.
I used to have a bucket of candy.
So we, and maybe, I mean, the first isn't a magical day. It's just trying to think of how to get them in.
But I wouldn't be opposed to doing more than one. So if the first one is the thirty, I can find a date for.
And then we can find another date like the eighth or, because we're going to meet on the sixth. We'll have more of the tweaks, more of the questions, feedback from the community. And we would have met on the sixth to try and hammer that out and incorporate that.
And then by the eighth, it's a little more final, that's how we kind of, kind of plot it for.
Say we're, you've said this all along, right? It's a pretty ambitious timeline. I would say by all means, if you have tweaks right by the end of the week, whether we are able to get maps and stuff that have the data on it, I think we very much talk about those tweaks on Tuesday night at the very least. Here are the things that I have found after looking at this issue. And so even if you don't get this updated and this is what's presented on Tuesday, I think you bring up the handful of things that we've found. And at least it's talked about that there are other changes that might happen and then give a little more time to get the data. And if we can get the data, it would be better.
The other thing is that in the past, you know, many times the board has come to the community with several proposals. It hasn't been just one plan. It's been sometimes ten plans, which is far too many. But are we going with one plan? Is that our intention?
I mean, I don't see how you do three because they're so specific and each one has dominoes. I'd have a hard time managing how we can, I mean, I'd love to see a plan that got better, better numbers, but I don't know. I mean, I'm trying to imagine what that would look like.
So this could be one plan and then that could be plan two.
In years past, you had the optimum plan and then other plans that just were way out there that it's just like, oh, my God, no. And it's like, oh, yeah, that one, you know, it's golden.
I would argue that plan one is we don't know anything because it's a change from current boundaries.
I just remind you, plan one is that there are new attendance areas going in.
That's what I'm saying. That's plan one.
Two schools opening and one closing. We've got new attendance areas.
But we all know that that's, I mean, we've all been very open that we plan to make changes.
So we could try to build some plans, but also my goal, how much time we have and how much burden related is in terms of coming up with alternatives. I feel like, I feel like what's been presented tonight is a very solid step forward in the right direction. And maybe some tweaks or the thing that we just talked about in the Mann attendance area that could get us further along. I just, I don't think there's dozens of those to get us further along. And so I would really like to see us put our energy in tweaking the plan that we have. And maybe there's, maybe some options come out of that, I don't know, not knowing what those tweaks might be. But that's what we can actually discuss it on the twenty-third and see where we're landing with some of the inputs that we know was going forward by the early. And it's hard to sort of anticipate not knowing what people are going to bring forward.
And that's just exactly what I'm saying.
So it's something having plans that we present. I would love to see us go for a work, sorry, a listening post on the thirtieth with whatever we come up with from the twenty-third discussion so that we can get early input. Then we give us the opportunity for a board work session on the sixth to incorporate the feedback that we got on the thirtieth. Are you guys thinking of?
No, no. Your work is working.
My question is, do we want to go ahead and schedule a second community listening post, post eleven-six? Are we doing that Thursday or the following week, the Thursday on, sorry, the fifteenth?
The eighth of the fifteenth.
Yeah, eighth of the fifteenth.
So the benefit of the fifteenth is that we will have had two work sessions and a board meeting, a discussion at the board table before the next community listening post. And so that kind of like, if you like that idea, the fifteenth might be the optimal date.
And also throughout this, I kind of got shot down the last time I said it, but.
Oh, but the fifteenth is ISB and the questions would be out there. So that's not going on. Sorry.
That's right. Also the PSDO meeting, or DPO meeting at night that night.
The DPO.
DPO means that evening?
I think they moved it off the meeting or it's off the evening.
Yeah, I thought they did.
It's still the fourth. Anyway, I said this before and it kind of got shot down, but we may have, I would suggest that we divide and conquer and have two meetings on the same night on the opposite sides of town. Because one central location, one location may be ideal to try and get everyone there. I just don't know that that's going to happen. And I think the ones that we're looking at have pretty defined east-west type of.
I think it's fair. The fifteenth is not, is, I don't know, most of us are going to the morning, right? So dividing conquer is why we know that place is mine.
I'm in any meeting, but the thirtieth.
Oh, the thir-, I see what you're saying. Okay. I mean, that's a good idea.
Well, my only thought with that is, is that for many people in the community that may go to that, that's a first kind of look at it. They'll listen to the discussion, they'll digest it. And then when you have another one a week later or something like that, there can be some further thought come from them because it's no different than us.
Yeah, yeah.
You get it one time and that. So I, myself, I think there's a benefit with having two separate nights, that type of a thing. Just because there will be some.
I think you're still saying two separate nights.
Oh, you're thinking two separate nights with two separate meetings?
Yeah.
So four meetings total?
So half of the.
Well, but half of us would go one, half of us.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm.
It might get more people that night.
Instead of one central location because this is affecting several attendance areas.
So we have one in southeast, we have one in northwest.
Yeah, absolutely.
We've got to divide the staff, have, divide the staff up in some, two different locations.
Maybe if staff is available.
So the thirtieth is two locations. I like the idea.
We won't have a full board if we do that because there's, if four people go to one, then that's a meeting that, then Kim would have to be there. You don't say, then the three wouldn't, so there wouldn't be that.
Right.
I can solve that for us.
No way.
I'm just, we're just discussing staff now. Who would need to be there? Otherwise, we're going to have to drag in like Kristen will have to come and be at one and Kim will be there.
Kristen would love to come.
Actually, we'd only have to do one because there'd only be one with a quorum and the other one wouldn't be, so.
So the thirtieth is two locations, southeast and northwest. Same thing, six to eight, like with your last time.
I thought we did six to seven thirty.
We actually finished by seven thirty.
Oh, okay.
So wait, let's just call it six to seven thirty.
Some people.
We were associated away.
Six to three.
No one wanted to talk to me. Well, yeah.
So we won't, especially now if we're meeting in two different spots, we'll probably get two different pieces, two different bits of feedback. And we won't hear that until the sixth. I wish there were a way we could hear it so that we could make a, have a new plan already on the sixth.
So I just went all the way back to August seventh. There's only, in this set of changes here, there's only two building blocks that weren't included in the ones that we went all the way back to August seventh. One is that Washington place.
And that's like four kids.
Right. And then the other one's Forest View. So those are the only two building blocks that weren't included in here. Other than that, every building block we've talked to going all the way back to August seventh is somewhere in here.
It's the configuration of them. Let's, if you're looking at them in isolation before, now it kind of the action of them together.
Right, yeah.
I mean, we've talked about.
Okay, so my battery in my computer almost died. I thought that was one of our, I feel like we need to get some clarity on that stuff around this community. So on the thirtieth, I'm hearing two separate sessions, six to seven thirty, one in southeast, one in Forest View. Okay, good. We'll have a work session on the sixth where we will have gaming together. That's the first opportunity for us to do that. We're out now.
Can we each write up a little report of what we heard?
Just at least.
So at least have some thoughts of the people that people listened to.
That's fair. I mean, if we will.
Are we doing this in a talking table discussion or?
Yeah. So, yeah, so we give us a, just some more points and things that we learned and just we'll share it up to the neighborhood. We need to compile it and on this end out there on Google list comments.
I think that would be nice. I have a whole list of notes that I had talked to people last week and I didn't share them with everybody.
So let's agree to do that and take notes from the thirtieth and do that after.
Sure.
We will have a work session on the sixth. And then we want to try to do another set of joint sessions on the eighth. Next week is going to be tough because of ISB. We're not going to have enough board members to do two sessions for sure.
I feel like at some point we have to all be hearing the same information from people. We don't have enough time to leave out a week.
And the eighth, we do one.
All right, that's not a bad idea. So did you guys hear that coming on?
So one place on the eighth.
Yes.
On the eighth, the one will be together.
Well, the fifteenth is a Thursday, right?
It is Thursday.
Yeah, I mean, we would be back for an evening meeting, but.
Sorry.
ISAB, I A S B.
She's got president's stuff on Friday.
Then we have three and three.
There you go.
Actually, I'm not a talent looking to the eighth.
Yeah.
I'm not going to be here. I don't care.
It would be more important for me to come back to the community meeting than to listen to the last keynote speaker.
On the fifteenth, guys, I don't know if it matters, but it does matter actually. We have conferences elementary. Two ten to seven. Is that right or is that Wednesday?
Hold on, hold on. I got the district calendar up here.
That's right. Are they on the eights as well? Do we go Wednesday?
Oh, yeah.
Wednesday.
Sorry, there's so many. It says every school has written in to try and mess around, so I just do school now.
So it's Wednesday to seven.
Oh, the seven.
Yeah, it is.
The fifteenth to sixteen. Six to thirty.
So that takes the fifteenth out?
Yeah.
So that's the eight.
Where we'll come together as one.
Okay.
When will we come together as one? Hold on, I'm totally lost. Okay.
Okay, so the eighth, we're going to have one session.
Okay, eleven, eight, one session.
Yes.
Where do you want that?
That is.
Okay.
That is.
Thank you, man.
Great way to take a mission, man.
Okay, so that's the, that's the eighth.
Yes.
What time?
And then.
Six o'clock.
And then, yeah, six o'clock. And then we've got board meeting on the thirteenth. We'll have another discussion about this and another work session.
Correct.
And then the next Tuesday is the day, we're not going, are we doing, we're not, the next Tuesday is before.
We're not, no.
That's before Thanksgiving.
Right.
Right?
Right, that's correct.
And then the next Tuesday is.
Does that work?
Last week when you, last week when I wasn't here, you guys moved all those big teaching learning reports at thirteen. You still want us to do them on that night?
There's a lot of reports on that night.
December, a lot.
Because that's not timing, right? We need that.
Well, the normal report doesn't have a time to give.
I know, we can give them all on the same night.
There you go.
Be ready for a long journey.
Let's get this. Every once in a while, we wind up with an operational efficiency that was unintended. So that'll be perfect. So twenty-seventh.
Are we doing it on the twenty-seventh or are we going to move it to December?
Twenty-seventh would just be.
Okay. Can we, I don't know. Could we put a question mark on the fourteenth if we get feedback that we need to have another community session before we vote?
November fourteenth?
November fourteenth.
Some people won't be here. Some of us are going up to the board.
And the fifteenth is conferences. That leaves the twelfth, I guess. That'd be before our meetings.
I mean, I just hope we can have a community session on the fourteenth. We still have, these are the remaining capacity. And back to my earlier comments, we're committed to making some changes for the nineteen-twenty four year. We have to prove ourselves.
That's the conversation I had was when I asked if it called rush to a vote. And I said, well, you're either rushing to the vote or you're rushing from the time to vote to the time to implement, right? And it's going to be rushed on one side and the other. And it feels rushed now coming into the head, but this has been a year-long discussion that we've had.
Exactly.
In one way or another, the specifics have definitely come to light recently. And that's why it feels very rushed as a conversation, but it hasn't been a rushed conversation. as a conversation, but it hasn't been a rushed conversation until the very detailed parts come out, and that's when everybody starts to pay attention, and that's the unfortunate part, which is why we tried to be out there ahead of time, we have people engaged in the process prior to that, but it only goes so far.
Have the principals seen this?
Yes.
Did they give you feedback?
We get some, yeah.
Are you able to share that?